Like back.
Seeing as how it's nine o'clock, we'll call this meeting in order. We'll call all three members present and the meeting was properly posted June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, today our prayer and pledge will be led by Mr. David Barnes, which seems highly appropriate uh in this season that we're in. So if you'll please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Father God, we're again truly grateful for the opportunities that you give us here at Oklahoma County Lords to serve others, to join as a team and Father to hopefully better the lives of those that we come in contact with and those for whom we have responsibility. Father, we thank you for your protection from severe weather. We thank you for the life giving rain. Pray that that protection would continue, Father, and we again, thank you for that. And for those who may have suffered adverse conditions, we just ask that you be with comfort and make provision for them, Father. Lift up the commissioners and their staffs, the other look at officials, Father. We just pray, Lord, that you would help us to all be diligent. Lord, help us to seek our knowledge and wisdom from you first and not the counterfeit offered by this world. Father, we love you, praise you. Thank you for all you do in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Item number one is discussion and approval of minutes from June eleventh. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items two through four are reoccurring. Uh, you got the claims, any thing abnormal with uh P card and blankets good. So is there a motion to approve items two through four? There's a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Items five through twenty one are the consent, unless there's any individual consideration, we'll consider them all at once.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve item five through twenty one in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number twenty two is district number one.
Good morning, commissioners. Today we have a resolution recognizing um the Crooked Oak Boys soccer team uh for winning the um three A boys state championship. So I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners is pleased to honor the Crooked Oak Boys soccer team as the class three A state champions. Whereas the Crooked Oak Boys soccer team defeated Cassidy four to one on Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty five. And whereas Crooked Oak Boys soccer team finished the season with fifteen to one record. And whereas the Roughnecks played in their fifth straight class three A state championship, winning in twenty twenty two and were runners up in twenty twenty one, twenty three, and twenty four. And whereas throughout the season, each player worked diligently to improve their skills on the field. And whereas the Roughnecks have developed into a remarkably efficient group of athletes whose skill on the soccer field is equaled only by their exemplary display of teamwork and sportsmanship. And whereas they are a credit not only to their families and their school, but also to their superb coaches. And whereas the members of the Crooked Oak Soccer Team have exemplified all of the characteristics that are essential for success both on and off the field, including courage, discipline, and integrity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County does hereby recognize, congratulate the Crooked Oak Boys Soccer Team on winning the class three A state championship and commend all those associated with the exceptional team. Today we have um Crooked Oak Staff. She'd like to come out and talk about.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for honoring our students today. I'm sorry they couldn't be here. We do have a diverse population, so they did have practice last night and they all worked today. So last minute with the rain, they canceled. But the one other thing I want to say about this group of boys, and I wish they were here so I could say it to their face, um is that they also were honored for their academic success. So they are student athletes. They're students first, and they did a wonderful job this year. I'm really proud of them. We appreciate your support.
And I'd like to say I met with some of your students a couple of months ago, and these great kids. I'm just so very happy for them and their success and and the success in the future as well.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three is a specific agreement on Waterloo between Oklahoma County and Logan County, not to exceed seven hundred two thousand. Logan County will participate with one hundred and seventy five thousand. Uh, if there's not any questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number twenty four is our standard C E O agreement. Uh, this is staying flat at one twenty eight. And this is us giving the Center for Employment Opportunities, which is a second chance employer um at the yard to do the mowing and a bunch of the good stuff. Uh, none of any questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Item number twenty five. Let's see, it's twenty five through thirty nine. Correct. These are all standard um benefit retirement related renewals. Um, you can take them all together. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Any questions?
Second.
There's a motion to approve items twenty five through thirty nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number forty is discussion possible action to appoint or for the approval of Austin Foose to serve on Oklahoma County Free Fair Board. Uh, he was approved by the Oklahoma County Free Fair Board on June fifth. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. He will be fulfilling the term of Brandon's. Item forty one is uh ARPA sub recipient agreement. Uh, Commissioner Mon, I believe this is yours. This is for the Asian District Cultural Association.
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item forty two, also uh ARPA sub recipient, second chance. Commissioner Lowe, this is yours. This is for a mobile
Mobile.
Trailer.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item forty three.
That's one of our executive session items.
Yep, this is one of our fun ones. Um, item forty four is election board. This is a yet another uh copier agreement with Stanley Systems.
I'd move all three if you want.
That would be great. Items forty four through forty six for approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Engineering, item forty seven.
This is your annual renewal with Midwest City for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. Uh, that's for uh items that shouldn't go in the regular trash, pesticides, paints, uh polishes, cleaners, automotive supplies. Uh, our citizens can take them to Midwest City um free of charge to the citizens.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item forty eight.
This is a dealing with our project for the Behavioral Care Center. It's a change order with standard engineering to do some uh risk assessment on some of the contaminants we're finding on site. Thirteen thousand one hundred fifty four dollars.
You've heard the explanation. Is there a motion?
Motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item forty nine.
This is a claim of pinnacle. The money's actually held at ODOT. They're clearing our SERV project out on Luther Road. Move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item number fifty.
This is an agreement with team design to get some uh environmental work started on a project on Covell Road so we can advance our position in the SERV program. Uh, ODOT will do these uh at their cost, but they won't do them on the timetable that lets us position ourselves for the construction money. So I've advised that we should advance these ourselves so we can position ourselves for the construction money, which is a much bigger number. Um, and it's allowed that we can do this. So send you one thousand four hundred dollars out of C B R I account. It's not coming out of your highway cash. And we can better position ourselves in the SERV program.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, there are motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number fifty one.
This is something new. Um, this is a permit application that would allow private contractors to work in our right of way under the direction of our superintendents. Uh, in this particular case, uh, there's a drainage situation that's uh impacting a homeowner. They would like to move the drainage to the north around their house and put it right back in the same creek. It's a better plan. Uh, this house probably should not have been built in this location, but that was done back in the nineties. Uh, so this is a solution. The applicants are here. Um, and this being the first one, I wanted to run across the board for two reasons. So you understand it, you could approve this one and then give maybe administrative approval on any future ones that that pop up. Um, as we monitor the situat- as our community grows, we're gonna have more of this.
Yeah, I know that this has been a longstanding problem all the way back to Commissioner Mon's district uh in the Koma Park where we had it shooting right at
Yeah.
a person's house.
Well, we just had one.
Yeah, another one.
I'd love to go. And this one, that's what this does. It shoots right into their house and into their separate field.
Yeah. So this is, this is definitely a long time coming. Thank you for doing the work, gentlemen.
Uh, nothing to add other than uh, you know, this is, this is a plan that was created some ti- time ago. Uh, I think by uh Mr. Trumbo's department. So we're just asking for approval of of the plan that they've come up with. We think it's a good solution to this particular problem.
I'll move the item and thank you for helping come up with a solution.
There's a motion and second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Any further action on that? Any further needed clarification? Okay, good. Item number-
I do want those to be administrative in the future. We can bring them all here.
I mean, I'm fine with you doing it. It could be needed to be expeditious. And sometimes we go up to nine days in between a meeting. And if it didn't hit the deadline right and all that, could be imperative to their property, so.
Let's go ahead and just for approval, just make a motion to approve uh allowing administrative for Stacy to go ahead and approve those.
Motion to approve.
Perfect.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's just for future, not yours. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Item number fifty two, division order from Phillips sixty six.
This is for your oil royalties.
We're good.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Facilities management. This is uh between V O C C and Waste Connections. This is just our standard renewal, right, Keith? Are you? All right. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Juvenile Bureau. Shocker, a copier lease. And fifty five is a copier and fifty six.
Move all three.
Is a copier.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Aye.
Thank you. Planning Commission, item fifty seven. Come on, Eric. Tell us all about using an ATM. Is this just a renewal?
Yes, this is for our credit card um machines that we have. So our trades that are out doing work can call us to pay for inspections.
This has actually spread things out and helped you quite a bit, correct?
It has provided a much better level of customer service uh to those folks. Now, as far as speeding things up on our side, I would say no. Uh, it's a lot more paperwork for us as far as auditors and all that, but it does help those folks tremendously.
That's good. You've heard the explanation. Is there
Motion.
Second. Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number fifty eight.
Fifty eight through sixty are renewal agreements uh from the next fiscal year. Fifty eight with the um daily living centers in the amount of one hundred sixty three thousand. Fifty nine with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Foundation uh not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. And sixty is the third amendment with the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority, not uh not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand.
Those are the three items.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Items fifty eight through sixty, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number sixty one. This is uh just the M O U for Western Heights for S R Os. This isn't any additional. You've already had two there before, so.
Renewal.
It's just renewal.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All of-
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Treasure, this is our annual financial statement for resale. If anybody doesn't know the amount, she's gonna give us the amount.
I'm gonna give you the amount. That's true.
Everybody hold on.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, every year we have to declare an excess in our resale fund. Um, this year our, our excess is of five million one hundred sixty six thousand, two hundred and sixty four dollars. What that means is it gets divided a third to the cities, a third to the schools, and a third to county general. So our share for this year will be one million seven hundred twenty two thousand eighty eight dollars. Um, that will be in the general fund on or before June thirtieth. And then it'll get picked up with the September supplement, and we will be able to budget it out in September. Um, this amount is two hundred and seventy two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars more than last year for our third. Any questions?
Seeing none. You've heard the explanation. There's a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners comments. Commissioner Mon?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
No comment.
Uh, any new business? Seeing none. Is there a motion to recess into executive session? There is a motion. Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand in recess. Thank you. Alright. Ms. Contese is ready, is there a motion to return from executive session?
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is there a motion? Uh, sorry, can we get this all? On item sixty-five, to settle for twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, well, that would be a first. And a second, all those in favor?
Right.
Alright, let's, uh, return to item number forty-three. Is there a motion? Motion to approve on item forty-three.
Motion to approve.
There's motion to approve and.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now back down to item. Dun dun dun, sixty-six, uh, this is. We don't really need a motion, it's just gonna be the procedures discussed, uh, citizen participation, I've got one here for P V A, for B O C C, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, say no objection, that'll be the order, all of us. We stand adjourned. Stay tuned for P V A. Commissioner Mon's in, Commissioner Lo, you there?
Just saying.
Okay, seeing as how it's past nine fifteen, we'll call the P V A meeting to order, all three members present, notice that the meeting was properly posted June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, first item of business is approval of minutes, is there an approval?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? Anyone?
Second.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. On to item number two, discussion possible action regarding claims. I don't see anybody motion to approve claims. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is a lease agreement with Vicky Zempbaha. Uh, and her official capacity is D A for storage space at Northeast Twenty-third, former. Uh, what do we call that building?
Social service.
Social services, thank you, is there any questions?
I do have a question, how much does that cost?
She is leasing that space, about seventy-two hundred square feet, at seven dollars a square foot, for a total annual figure, fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollar.
Would we be able to move that storage, um, material in the other building, in the annex, the building that we're repairing?
Talking about the I C B?
I'm not.
Where the D As are gonna be moved?
Oh, no, 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 no.
These are.
Uh, this is, this is storage files, evidence, those kinds of things, that include, uh, vehicles that have been seized, other items. And so it's, it's quite a lot of, of material that they require to store.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number four is a rental of the, um, event room for Oklahoma G O P summer picnic.
Who's the item?
There's a motion for approval and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is. Also an approval for Oklahoma County Free Fair at the same spot. There's a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is an O G and E business energy efficiency program for I C B.
This is a contract with clear, uh, results. To determine whether or not we're entitled to a rebate for the discontinued use of the electrical systems, circulate, circulating pumps and so on, that provided chilled water and steam to the I C B. We did this when we, uh, remodeled the courthouse, we discontinued use of two fifty horsepower pumps. O G and E wrote us a check at that time of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So this is the same approach we're taking with the remodel of the I C B and hopes we get, uh, a rebate of some amount.
You've heard the explanation, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion, is there a second? And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven is, uh, an agreement between Lingo and Oklahoma County for amendment number one, this is for, uh, emergency management alternatives. And it's gonna be in the amount of eighty-three thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and no cents.
All of these items were bid on bid day, but we didn't accept them because they were ad alternates. Uh, we are now wanting to move them into the contract as Mr. Barnes had moved some money from an old project forward to this project. Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Citizens' participation, I have a Mary Anne Bradfield. Here to speak about disaster assistance and presidential disaster. Ma'am?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak, um, under this, as P V A. First, I wanna thank all of you for everything you've done for the disaster survivors. As you know, the president declared a federal major disaster declaration for the wildfires and strait line winds. I know you all have been communicating, um, not just on this, but on other disasters, and I wanna say thank you. We have not had a lot of response from Oklahoma County. And maybe they don't need the assistance, but if you do have the opportunity to express your concerns, um, please let me know if there is something we can do better. If you have meetings, events we can come to, we're happy to do, but I wanna call attention to the fact that there's no obligation to take the loan. If you apply from, with S B A. There is, um, no fee to apply, but if you miss that deadline, you miss that opportunity to have access to these loans with interest rates as low as two point seven five percent interest, and up to thirty years. And that's for homeowners, renters, businesses and nonprofits, versus a credit card when you get down to the wire and maybe insurance didn't quite cover that. And remember, FEMA is still available to them as well in this presidential disaster declaration. I don't wanna take a lot of your time, I did want to mostly say thank you. And I'm leaving some brochures, um, on the actual disaster, as well as some other brochures, they're a little more colorful, and your constituents might like with Q R codes, so they can go online and apply. So thank you again for having us, and thank you for allowing us to serve your constituents.
I appreciate it, thank you, Maryam. Hmm, any board comments, Commissioner Lo?
No comments.
Commissioner Mon, any new business, seeing none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
There's a motion, see no objection, that'll be the order. We stand adjourned. Stay tuned for twenty minutes. And much important.